If you will, please take our seats. Okay, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. I appreciate your patience. We're going to have our invocation by Dr. S.B. Bagley. And I believe they're the chaplain at Beck- Brexville VA Medical Center. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And we would ask Sergeant First Class Baines to lead us in that pledge. If you will, please stand with me.
Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our solid tears, Thou who has brought us thus far on our way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, Keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places, O God, where we met Thee; Lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget Thee; Shaddled beneath Thy hand may we forever stand, True to our God, true to our native land, True to our county, and true to our community. We come now, O God, to ask Your blessings on this meeting, Is deliberations in all who are in attendance. Thank You for these commissioners who have committed themselves To the improvement of our community and the good citizens in this area. Give them the courage to say no to powerful interests When yes would be more beneficial to the common good; And the fortitude to say yes when that would be more meaningful to the welfare of the people. And always mindful, O God, That whatever is said or done must be pleasing to You. Help us to express our faith in You Through the decisions that we make, Especially as to how they affect people who need our help. Help us to be the answer to someone else's prayer, For we ask in Your name. Amen.
Everybody flag please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag Of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, One nation, under God, indivisible, With liberty and justice for all, and naked.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 6, 2023 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I got a couple. The first one I need to... There's a correction that needs to be made on a... Purchasing Through Central Services. Ms. Carroll, could you come up and state what this Difference there is?
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. We just need to do a name update for... on the Consent Agenda item number 11. The name of the vendor should be Woody Folsom Auto Group Inc. out of Valdavia. It's the same vendor, but for a purpose of payment, we need to make the change to the name of the vendor.
Okay, I'm asking for that to remain on the Consent Agenda with the noted correction.
What was that name again?
Uh, yes, it should be Woody Folsom Auto Group Inc.
Oh, Auto Group.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, another change would be...
Don't we need to vote on that, Mr. Chair?
No, because it's just, uh... Well...
It's not accurate.
That's a good point. No, we'll do it individually. Absolutely, that's a good point. So those in favor, aye. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, talk us through this next one with the... I think there was amendment To the ordinance in reference to the pension. Or is that Ms. Merritt?
Well, yes, I can speak to that. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Board. Item 18, the synopsis incorrectly states the percentage. It should be... The funding percentage is from 13.9 to 21.5. It's not a change to the actual ordinance itself, it's just the synopsis was not correct. So that change should be made for people's Knowledge and correction.
So why should it be?
Instead of... In the synopsis it says 21.5 to 29, it's actually 13.9 to 21.5.
All right, so...
There's no need for... It's just to correct in the synopsis, yes. But the ordinance itself doesn't have that information in it.
Okay. So the next item is Item number 7 on Consent Agenda, I'm asking to be tabled. They are requesting that it be placed on the June 20th Agenda.
Can you tell us?
So is there... That's a motion. Is there a second?
We don't know what it is for record. Can you read what you're asking to have tabled, please? We don't want to go by a number in case it's...
Absolutely. Recommendation for award, RFP 2312, Multi-Systemic Therapy and Aggressive Aggression Replacement Training Programs for Clayton County. I'm making a motion to table that until June 20th. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. I oppose. It's unanimous. Uh, Mr. Reed, there's two emergency items. Or is it just one?
Yeah, it's actually two. Would you like me to take them both?
Yes, please.
So first is Resolution 2023-122, which is a resolution to authorize Clayton County To grant a special facilities use request To allow Connect to compete Incorporated doing businesses EveryoneOn To host a free computer training sessions at the County's Technology Services and Training Center to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary To accomplish the intended this resolution To provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. Just for clarification, EveryoneOn is providing free training to 30 County citizens, providing free laptops. And that will be done on June 12th and 14th. In fact, all the dates will be prior to our next meeting, which is why that is coming up as a Emergency item. And the second is Resolution 2023-123, Authorizing the county to approve a special facilities use request with Senator Gil Davenport To host the Juneteenth Celebration at International Park To authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary To accomplish the intended this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. And this event will be on June 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which will be before This board's next meeting, which is the reason why it's being asked to be added as an Agenda item tonight.
All right, I'll offer a motion for both items to be placed on the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Frank.
I sent an email as we are putting these emergency items. And I asked that as a board, that we look at the... What is this event called? Show on the Road? Because it was sent out that it was mandatory for all departments to attend, number one. Number two, it is on a Saturday and it's at a church. And number three, I never got back what it was going to cost. In a previous meeting when a commissioner asked to have an event at a off-site, And it was a church, there were questions that went forth, which are, you know, we can ask questions. But I find it interesting that we bring these before the board, But we didn't have the... You didn't put that in a resolution as an emergency Vote, so that we can codify that event like we do everything else.
Mr. Reed?
Okay. The first thing is that typically this board has had four Items that you all, as commissioners, are using county equipment. You all don't usually come to the board asking For permission. For example, if you are having your monthly constituent meetings, Or if you're having meetings with... Special meetings with homeowners association, You all won't ask for that. And also, or you have not typically in the past Asked each other to approve you all holding those type of events. However, in the past, in doing some research, you all, the board would From time to time, ask for support for certain items where the board would have Events at county locations. For example, Looking at the back-to-school events in Districts 2 and 3 in 2018 and 2019, This board did ask... Passed a resolution to support of both of those events. Typically, in where you have board approval as needed, Is when you all decide to partner with another entity. For example, There was a gospel concert that was done, and there's been others where the board has Had a commissioner partner with another agency or another entity to hold an event, Whether it's at a county facility or another facility to To do something. And then also, when there's a county equipment or personnel being used by another facility, Which is this request from Senator Davenport, You all would typically approve those when the person is not willing to pay The board's set rate. So for your... You have established rental rates That someone can just come to, use county equipment, Pay that, that doesn't come to you all for approval. If it's a nonprofit, there's another rate, They will pay that, that typically doesn't come to you all for approval. The time that it does come to you for approval is when there's a nonprofit that desires The board to approve that at no cost to them. And those facilities use requests will come, and you all will vote on that. As far as the show of the road is concerned, and looking at historically, My understanding is that this does not involve non-county employees using county equipment. The county employees, if there is county equipment that's being done, it's being used by county employees. The other is that it does not, to my knowledge, involve a partnership With a non-county entity, in the sense that you're... The chairman is partnering with some other Non-county person to provide an event. The last time that the board voted on an issue related to the show on the road, I believe, Courtney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was in 2016?
I believe that's 2013.
2013, okay. And that was when the event was being held at South Lake Mall. And at that time, South Lake Mall had an agreement that they wanted the board to Approve before they would allow the county to use certain space. So that... When it came to the board, the board at that time approved that agreement. To my knowledge, there has not been an agreement requested Or required by First Baptist of Jonesboro to host this event. So that has not come to the board for approval. Now, going forward, if the board decides they want to change How you all have typically operated, in the sense of if you want To have to come to each other to ask for approval beforehand to use county property Or county equipment or county personnel, you certainly can do that as a standing Policy among yourselves. And that, if that's a will of the majority of the board, I certainly can put something together for you all to spell out how that occurs. We'll just kind of defer to what you all would like to see handling that among yourselves.
Am I correct in that this was made to be mandatory for all employees to participate? That's what the email went out as?
Well, let me speak on that to clarify and set some minds at ease. There is no agreement. They're providing a space. The requirement is for department heads who are exempt employees, Which means they are not getting paid any overtime, To come out and meet with the constituency of this county To talk about their individual departments. And yes, I would like the department heads, because those are the ones Who are the decision-makers and impact the daily lives of our citizens every day. They should be able to answer those questions to the citizens who want to come And find out what their department does and what they are accountable for. No equipment is being utilized. I simply want the department heads, just like HOA meeting, Just like your community meetings, Commissioner Franklin, When you tell the police, the chief of police and other department heads to come, I didn't know you were saying that it was optional for them to come or not. But they show up because you tell them to show up. And my expectation is there to be an interaction with our constituents of this county. And they've been doing this since 2013, and you've even attended several of those in the past. So I don't know why this difference made.
I'm so glad you said that. I'm gonna go back to my original question. The only thing I asked is that we should have added it as we added everything else, so that we could codify it. So I'm so glad. We need to be consistent, and it just needed to be codified. So thank you so very much for that explanation.
Mr. Chairman. I just want to make the statement. I don't... In my opinion, we don't need to ask. But like I said, when I was talking about what I was doing with the church last... On the last meeting, There were questions asked, am I using personnel? Am I doing the same thing? So my thing is, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We're asking those same things, those same questions here and now. Now, I'm doing something for the community as well. I'm giving out laptops. I'm doing... I'm doing mental health services. I'm bringing in our people to help out within the community. And so, we just need to, as a board, if we're gonna do... If we're gonna drill someone and ask them, are they using county employees? Are they doing this? Are they doing that? Then you should expect the same thing to come back to you as well. And so, don't do one thing for one person and don't do it for the other. And so, we can just move away from the mess and work on what we're supposed to do for the people and the community.
So then I'm gonna ask that, Mr. Reed, you go ahead and put that in place So that we can make sure that it is codified in the future and put it on the next agenda, so there is consistency. Simple as that. So that the employees are not confused. We'll work on it.
And I'm, as a new board member, I don't want to be confused when you're asking me if I'm gonna use county employees When I can, and it's not a problem. So if it's not a problem for him to use them, it shouldn't be a problem for me to use them as well.
The issue wasn't the county employees. The issue is The waiving. You asked... Now, let me finish. You asked for the stage to be utilized and the fees waived, that's $1,500. You're asking for... At first you just said the stage and one employee. Next day you came back and sent an email to the board that says now you need three buses and three employees. And this is... Event is from 9:00 to 6:00, which means, I think it's 9:00 to 6:00. Correct me if I'm wrong. But they have to be there at least an hour before and an hour after, so you're talking about an 11-hour day. They have to be paid as well. You got the stage, you got the buses, you got fuel. And if all of that's gonna be waived, We'd simply, and Commissioner Davis asked the questions also, it's not nitpicking, It's simply just asking what is involved, so we can know the financial impact Of the event that we are waiving for the community. Nobody really has a problem with working with the community. But as... But as a board, I think we have a right to ask What is all that's gonna be involved and get a correct and accurate number.
And, Mr. Chairman, and as a board, we have the same right to ask you the same question.
I'm not offended by your question.
So again...
I'm gonna call for the question in a second.
Exactly.
And just as we did our policy...
Well, if you call for the question, how are you gonna keep talking?
We just... I'm telling you what the question is.
The question's been called, so... Well, we were just talking about placing it on the...
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Although... Now, I'm confused. On two items that you just read, or was it just...
Your head started moving.
Two items. There were two items that...
The two hours prior to to put it on Consent Agenda. Did we already take a motion on it?
You took a motion, Mr. Chair, and a second.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Well, you all, there was a call for the question, so that would need to be voted on first.
You are correct. All right. She called a question. I'll second it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Those who favor of approving those Added Agenda items.
So moved, Mr. Chair. We already did that. We're done.
Those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Now, let's proceed on.
You know where you are?
Sure don't. Now, Madam Clerk usually interjects, so I usually wait on her.
Please help him, Madam Clerk.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
All right, at this time we're gonna have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is a presentation, Veteran of the Month.
All right, this month, Sergeant First Class Albert Lee Baines. Albert Lee Baines was born on 21st of November of 1939 in Vicksburg, Mississippi, To Willie Baines and Augusta Mae Selman Baines. Albert was raised by his grandfather until the age of four. He was then moved to San Diego, California, and attended the San Diego Public School System. Albert's mother insisted he go to church, where he was very active. He attended Sunday School Church service and BYPU, Evening service along with singing in the church choir. At the young age of 12, Albert was baptized in Mount Airy Baptist Church. At age 18, he joined the United States Army, and while serving in South Korea, Albert once again gave his life to Christ. He was born again. Pastor Baines had known for years that God had a calling on his life, But he would not fully submit until 1982. That year, he was ordained as a minister of the gospel At Grace Tabernacle Church in Oak Grove, Kentucky. In 1982, he would also retire from the United States Army after 24 years of service As a Vietnam combat veteran. And after retirement, Pastor Baines continued to serve God and seek the Kingdom of God. While in the United States Army, he received his Associate's Degree from Georgia Military College. After retirement, Pastor Baines continued his education to further receive his Bachelor's Degree From St. Leo's College, and continued studying to receive his PhD From Ministry International, Inc. A passage out of Hosea Inspired Pastor Baines, Hosea 4, verse 6, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge." He found this statement to be true, And that he began to teach the Word of God so people could know it with true understanding. In 2013, Pastor Baines founded and pastored over Veterans for God and Country Christian Ministry, where he actively preaches. It would be in 2019, where friend and fellow pastor Bishop Wayne Alexander Introduced him to a bishop, Dr. Charles Waller D.D., Vice President of Ministry International, Inc. And it was there, at M2, where Pastor Albert Baines taught and graduated His first class in the school of ministry. Please help me to recognize and honor Sergeant First Class Albert Lee Baines.
Our next item is a proclamation. Clayton County recognizes... I'm sorry. My apologies. Our next item is a proclamation. Clayton County recognizes June as National Home Ownership Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize National Home Ownership Month, June 2023. Whereas homeownership is part of the American dream and is close to the hearts of the people of Clayton County, And whereas a new homeowner receives a key that does more than unlock a door, It represents a place where children can grow, learn, and feel safe. An opportunity to save money and build equity for the future. And a sense of stability and belonging to the greater community. And just as homeownership builds strong families, it is also the building block of strong communities. And whereas most Americans are homeowners today than at any time in our history, And Clayton County is committed to helping more citizens, Especially those who have been shut out in the past, Know the joy, the financial security, and the sense of community that comes with owning their own home. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Provides funds to Clayton County, which are used to provide families with the tools And information they can use to overcome the barriers that deny homeownership To many Americans through a combination of housing counseling, Down payment assistance, and tax incentives. HUD is helping thousands of Americans buy homes and live the lives they had only once imagined. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Do hereby honor and encourage all citizens To join and celebrate National Home Ownership Month, And call on all Clayton County citizens to join us in recognizing the importance of providing Every citizen with the opportunity to achieve their own American dream. In witness, I have a hearon too, Set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia To be affixed this 6th day of June in the year 2023. to be affixed this 6th day of June in the year 2023. Clay?
Yes. Our next proclamation is June 2023 is National Drug Court Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes June 2023 as National Drug Court Month. Whereas treatment courts have been restoring lives and families for more than three decades, they are the cornerstone of the justice reform that is sweeping the nation with more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide. And whereas treatment courts have served more than 1.5 million individuals, they are now recognized as the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history, and they save an average of $6,000 for every individual they serve. And whereas treatment courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do it at a less expense than any criminal justice strategy. And whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family unification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are fully drug-free, they facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. And whereas the Council of Accountability Court Judges of Georgia has recognized the Clayton County Drug Court to serve from 2023 through 2026 as a model drug court and mentor for other courts. Treatment courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance use and crime, we all rise. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Drug Court Month. Here in Clayton County, Georgia, we encourage all citizens to recognize the practitioners and participants who make drug courts work. We also recognize the significant contributions that drug courts have made and continue to make in reducing drug use and crime. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of June in the year 2023.
Our last proclamation is presented by Vice Chair Franklin. Clayton County honors our Public Works employees.
Can we have all of our Public Works representatives come down? Thank you. And I think that includes Parks and Rec. Come on down here. So, May 21st through May 27th is actually Public Works Week, and that's where we're connecting the world through Public Works. Clayton County, Georgia aspires to be a county in which residents can live, work, worship, and raise families in peace. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Clayton County. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, you heard that, and engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructures and facilities essential for our citizens. Therefore, I, Felicia Franklin, Commissioner on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate that the previous week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join us in celebrating these vital members of our community. Thank you. And I think I saw the sheriff in the back, too. And come on up, Fire Department, Building and Maintenance. I got enough for all of y'all.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, is there a sucking?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Sucking by Commissioner Franklin, any questions on any other items? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is a discussion item, item number 36. This is a discussion item on Rainbow House Incorporated, which was requested by Vice Chair Franklin.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I have, I asked for Mr. Jack Hancock to be here, and actually, we can address it in executive session, is that correct? That's what I was told.
It depends on what you want to...
Mr. Hancock, please, okay, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed.
Come to the podium, Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, there are certain items, as we discussed today, with regard to the Rainbow House issue, that we certainly can discuss in executive session regarding the real estate and any potential litigation. Those two things would be covered by the privilege to allow you to do that.
Okay. We will handle it in executive session.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
All right, our next item will be item number 37. This is the board appointment for the Development Authority.
All right, this board appointment is to the Development Authority Board. Regina Deloach term on the Development Authority Board expires May 22nd, 2023, new terms for four years, beginning immediately and expiring on May 27th, 2027. Commissioner Davis, you have a recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Mr. Richard Mahone.
All right, I'll suck in that motion, is any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Board. Dr. Anya Sartor was elected as the new mayor of the city of Jonesboro and had to resign from the Library Board. New term will begin immediately and will expire February 1st, 2025. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, so move, we hold that to the next board meeting, which is what, June 20th?
Madam Clerk, you clear?
I'm clear.
Next appointment is also to the Library Board. Dr. Rump Carter resigned from the Library Board, the existing term will expire on November 2nd, 2024. Full board appointment, are there any recommendations? Madam Clerk, hold that as well. Next board appointment is to the DFAX Board. Charlton Bevins' term on the Family and Charity Services Board expires on June 30th, 2023, new terms for five years, expiring on June 30th, 2028. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I move to reappoint Mr. Charlton Bevins to that board.
I'll suck in the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two are passes. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment, I mean, I'm sorry, the board appointments.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, we're gonna pick up where we left off at the last meeting, those who were not able to speak because of the time limitation. First one up will be Ms. Carolyn Yanson. Aretha Ensley.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and Commissioners, my name is Aretha Ensley, and I am a resident of Hampton in Clayton County. Based on Clayton Crescent article dated May 12th, 2023, regarding the 2020 election of Ms. Franklin was not and is not eligible to serve as District 3 Commissioner, nor as Vice Chair for the county. Why? She committed a felony when she lied on the state affidavit. We, the citizens of Clayton County, demand the state initiate a thorough investigation into Ms. Franklin's 2020 campaign and unethical conduct. If or when found guilty, Ms. Franklin should be removed from office, and all expenses incurred during the time she held the office must be restored. Aren't there agencies in place to prevent this sort of occurrence? The Board of Elections and Registration and the Democratic Party apparently did not perform their mandatory duties. This blunder should never occurred.
D.C. Craddock.
Don D.C. Craddock, Ellenwood, Georgia, District 1. I got two minutes, so as a citizen, we have a right to come up and redress our grievances before this commission. We have so many problems in Clayton County. I was at the jail yesterday. It was ridiculous how in disrepair this jail has been. And it's years, decades of us not getting the services and the funding that's required of this body to maintain a safe jail. I'm a member of the ACLU, I'm a member of the NAACP, I'm friends with the Center for Human Rights, who are suing Clayton County because of the disrepair. The pipes leaked so much that we walked down a corridor and I felt unsafe. Everywhere you turn, these people, these brave men and women in the Sheriff Department are doing a job above and beyond what they're getting paid to do. We don't have the luxury to sit around as citizens and nitpick at things that are not significant. We are a Tier 1 county, and the way that that jail has been underfunded is disgraceful. Your job as a body is to ensure that we have proper funding for our agencies to give us those services that our tax dollars pay for. I'm not asking that it be done. As a citizen and a taxpayer and a stakeholder in this community, I'm demanding that it be done. We show how humane we are when we spend money in places that is needed. Those people that sit in that jail, there's 2,000 people. They are underserved, they are understaffed...
I'm sorry, but your time is up, sir.
And our sheriff hands tied behind his back. And we can do better than that in Clayton County.
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Lisa Fleming. Lisa Fleming?
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner asked us to say something.
I want to ask you if our sheriff could come up and speak during public comment?
He didn't sign up.
Can I, can we add him to it, though, so he can speak? Whether he signed up or not?
What's he gonna speak?
Because I want him to address the deal.
I'll address that at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Orlando Gooden.
You're getting a little smart over there.
Say what?
I said, you're getting a little smart, get it together. But you know I'm not the one.
Mr. Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. At the May 16th Water Commissioners Meeting, Sheriff Levon Allen asked for additional funding. March of last year, former sheriff's captain Brandon Chris also asked for additional funding with the regular budget request. After the 2023 budget, the sheriff requested six budget amendments. $63,000 for medical detectors, $23,000 for chairs, $2,176,000 for lock repairs, $218,000 for sheriff's compensation, $3 million for emergency repairs, now $1.6 million for additional deputies. If you're budgeted for 100 and you have 75, why do you need additional funding? Commissioner Franklin wants to give the sheriff a blank check with no oversight, no accountability, and no audits. No one asked Sheriff Allen why he's paid $18,000 to trick out two of his personal cars. $300,000 to put Sheriff Allen, Levon Allen, on all sheriff's vehicles. A half a million dollars, hold on, let me show you, a half a million dollars for 50 electric cars with no charging stations. Officials who are untruthful should be held accountable. Thank you, sir.
Gwen Gooden, pass. Atanya Jean Funny.
Oh, got a clock, oh, nice. Atanya Jean Funny, Clayton County, to Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Community. As a member of the Atlanta Neighborhood Development Partnership, ANDP, that's for Mr. Farmer, I'm in the 2022 cohort, I would like to invite you and the community to our Neighbor Works, American National Community Leadership Institute. It is a free training going on this Saturday. So our theme is turning your passion into action. We are looking for current and aspiring neighborhood leaders in the metro Atlanta area. So the topics, positive change in your neighborhood, be the champion for your community, and celebrating success. So this event will take place this Saturday, June 10th, at 10 o'clock. It will take place at the Atlanta Technical College, 1560 Metropolitan Parkway Southwest Atlanta, at the Denard Conference Center. And because we are providing lunch, we ask that everyone would register at www.aandpi.org/nw slash N W W twenty-three, and I do have a few flyers that I can give for anybody that's interested. And also, my business organization, Southern Crescent Women in Business, we will be holding a STEM camp next week for young women in middle school, and we do have a few scholarships for our community to bring their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Ingram.
Hi, my name is Linda Ingram. I'm from Clayton County and I live in Riverdale. I'm going to speak on animal control. And I like you. When I need somebody, Commissioner Franklin, I can call on you, so I have no problem with you.
Oh, thank you.
But anyway, and it's fine to someone asking on Facebook, why is Clayton County animal control so bad? Well, my daughter helped me out this, and we responded. It's a very much community issue. The city spays, the shelter spays, and neuters the pests before they can be adopted out. But there's so many residents here that are not educated on the huge problem of overpopulated, and then there are so many residents that just don't care. How do you do, how do you force people to care? You don't. We can't force people to do stuff. The political leaders of this county need to sit down, commit themselves, and make Clayton County animal control better, that we don't come in here every two or three years and say, oh, we need to do something down there. We have had five cactans down there, and it's a continuous thing, and we need help. And I'm not going to say anything about anybody bad, but this has to stop. We have DeKalb County out of Allenwood, we have Fulton, we have dogs coming in. If we had ten shelters, they would be full. Do we blame the captain? Do we blame y'all? Do we blame the chief? No, we have got to solve the problem. So I'm asking you all to please commit to making laws in order, and let's get them, and let's work with them, and let's don't keep coming up here with this Clayton County animal control and all the bad things that are being said, because I came in two thousand and twelve. I'm seventy-seven years old, and I'm tired. I'm tired of coming up here and defending Clayton County animal control. Now, I-
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Please help.
Aye, aye.
Okay, you got it.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Before I begin, let me say that I know that I bring new meaning to artificial intelligence to this Board. Today, my topic of conversation comes in the form of questions. Number one, the first Tuesday in the month of July is the Fourth of July. Does the Board of Commissioners meeting going to be held? Waiting for an answer.
Use up your time a little.
Yes, sir. In regard to the debacle of the Roman Project, when will an update of the retrieval of our five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars paid for the incubator project update be given? And how much money has already been spent so far for that retrieval? That ends my comment.
So per our code, anytime a meeting falls on a holiday, the meetings move to the very next day.
The next day?
Next day.
The fifth.
So it'll be the Wednesday, that Wednesday.
The fifth.
We, in reference to the retrieval of the money, we've been talking and discussing the options, there will be an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Board.
Thank you. Sarah Lawson.
My name is Sarah Lawson, and I'm also here to discuss issues with the Clayton County Animal Control. I have only been associated with the Clayton County Animal Control for a very short period of time, not even a month, and I've noticed some very glaring issues. My biggest one is there's a big lack of transparency. I am originally from Tiff County, and I worked at the shelter there as a foster and volunteer for three years. And the difference between my experience there and here is night and day. When you walk into the shelter, your ID is taken, and it feels like you've walked into a prison. You are not allowed to go into the kennels or any of the back rooms, and volunteers are not allowed to work on site due to inmate presence. And the reason for that is due to a lack of cameras in the corners, which just seems like an excuse to ignore, a lack of responsibility on the Clayton County Animal Control's part. Security cameras are thirty dollars on Amazon, I'm sure there's room in the budget for that. Intakes are supposed to get twenty-one days in the shelter before being eligible for euthanasia. I am currently fostering a dog from Clayton County Animal Control. She was there for seven days before she was put on the list for euthanasia. I understand space constraints and that there's always new intakes that need space, but there have been fixes to the solution that have been presented, such as double kenneling dogs that are non-aggressive breeds or of disposition that is non-aggressive, that has not been done. The problems that I've discussed are very similar to some of the issues that were faced in Tiff County during the days where I had first started working with them. They've since been resolved, and even though Tiff County Animal Shelter is in a smaller county and receives less funding, these resolutions were still made. They were only made through a change in leadership. The only way these issues will be fixed is if the person in power has a passion for what they're doing and truly cares about these animals. These are only a few of the issues that I've noticed. I don't have time to talk about all of them, but the animals are being affected directly by these issues, and they do not have a voice to speak for themselves, so I am here to speak for them and to speak about the issues that affect them most directly. Thank you.
Kimberly Smith Kirby.
Kimberly Kirby, homeowner, Clayton County. People are still turned away from seeing the dogs at Animal Control. They're allowed to see a couple, but after that, they are directed to look at the pictures of the dogs. Adopting and rescuing an animal is a very personal thing, and it's not like buying a burger at the McDonald's drive-thru. Animal Control dogs are not inventory, as Captain Turnip Seed says that they are. They are living, breathing creatures of God, the same God that made her. We don't call her inventory Turnip Seed. Please, people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. We need a caring, working captain promoting the freedom of these animals. Paige Turner has offered to run a Spain Uta program, bus program for C C A C, as she did before with great success. Please reach out to her, she will work with command. We need the urgent list back and pinned to the top of the A C page. Any urgent list needs to be pinned to the top of the page. Stop killing in secrecy. We are here to help, let us. Six dogs have been removed from Pet Harbor today. This means six dogs have been killed in secrecy with no urgent plea from the county. Turnip Seed has one-handedly unraveled over a decade of hard work to create a working relationship between Animal Control and Rescue. We need a better person as Captain over C C A C, not one that calls me and asks me for something that I have that she can put on her wall to remind her to be a better person. She should not need reminding. Lives depend on it. People do not succeed alone, people succeed together. Stop killing the animals. Stop killing the animals. Stop killing the animals. Stop killing the animals. Stop killing the animals.
Charlie Moore. Charlie Moore. Sharon Anderson. Sharon Anderson. Jody Chambers.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jody Chambers, and I'm a community advocate, a concerned citizen, and I reside in unincorporated Clayton County, where Ms. Franklin is the District Commissioner. I am writing this email regarding, well, it wasn't email. So, but I wrote this email regarding an article published in Clayton Crescent on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Georgia Tax Links Shows Franklin Owees Back Taxes During Two Thousand and Twenty Campaign. And I ran against you, you shouldn't even have been up there.
Ma'am, keep it your way.
This article states she knowingly declared her candidacy and signed the affidavit during the two thousand and twenty county election cycle for District Three. The Association County Commissioner of Georgia lists specific qualifications for individuals to be eligible to run for and remain a Commissioner. The list includes no default on federal, state, county, or school taxes. Based on this, it appears Commissioner Franklin is not in compliance with the qualification for Commissioner, and she should be subject to legal ramification. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment, and I don't see, I know there's a request for Sheriff Allen to come make a statement, but I no longer see him in here.
Sheriff Allen is here.
Oh, he's behind the pole.
With his children.
Sheriff Allen, there's been a request for you to come make a comment or two, are you willing to do so?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, Members of the Board, Sheriff Levon Allen, Hampton, Georgia. I wanted to make a comment on the pest control. From my understanding, it was put in the consent agenda to approve the seventy-eight thousand dollars for the bedbugs and lice treatment, but that's only half of the treatment. Let me explain. I received a grievance from an inmate stating that he had lice and/or bedbugs on his person and wanted me to look into it. Simultaneously, I received a phone call from his mother stating the same exact thing. So I ordered my chief deputy to contact two companies, both Knox Pest Control and Orkin Pest Control, to figure out what we had going on in the jail. Knox came back and said that it was not bedbugs, but it was lice is what we had. And there are two ways to treat lice, from what I found out from the pest control company. One is what you all authorized tonight, which is having a pest control exterminator come in and spray. The second part is medical, which there is a medicated shampoo that we give out to everyone that's been affected. Well, that comes with a cost per bottle. Then also, once we take care of that, we have to now replace the bedding and the clothing that the inmate has on. So one way that we can do it is, of course, just wash it and put it inside the washing machine and wash it. Well, when you do that, now you expose all of the dirty and infected stuff with all the stuff that we're gonna wash previously. So the best way to do it, to totally eradicate it, is to do everything in one sweep, that way we're not going backwards. So we do the pest control part of it, we do the medicated shampoo part, then we remove the bedding, the sheets, and the uniforms, and that way we can make sure that we get it done. Now, I wanted to just bring it to perspective. We have about two thousand inmates, and we probably process twenty-five to thirty thousand a year. So a bedbug or lice can be transferred by contact. So, you know, just like everyone's sitting in these chairs, if someone has bedbugs right now, and they get up and someone else sits there, that's how it happens. Has nothing to do with cleanliness or how you do it, it's just the carrier. So I just ask that when we bring it back, that all of that is looked at and considered when we make the decision. Thank you so much.
Do you know how much that's gonna cost?
Yes, sir, so it'll be an additional... I put it in the email, it's gonna be an additional hundred thousand.
For the public.
Yes, so let's get this breakdown for you.
Mr. Chair, I ask that you be consistent. I just saw an officer jump up and run in front of one person. I have not seen the officers get this audience and help them to understand that we are to be respectful. And just like I asked before, all I'm asking is for consistency for everyone on this dais. And we put in place for things to be there so that we can conduct the business of the people. This meeting is the business of the people, and I ask that you please be the chairman and allow us to conduct the business of the people and be consistent.
And I have no problem with that, but let's be consistent on this Board, being respectful to the citizens as well as they come up here. Now, I ask for, if you don't mind, to provide a financial impact for the citizens, because this Board is always saying, let's spread it over the minutes, let's spread, so let's spread it over minutes, so that way we'll know what we're talking about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So the mattresses is gonna cost forty thousand, seven hundred dollars. The medication and the lice treatment that goes into their hair, that's gonna cost thirteen thousand dollars. The Knox treatment, which you all approved tonight, is gonna be approximately seventy-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then the uniforms are gonna be forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars approximately. And then to replace the mattresses, it's gonna be about forty thousand, seven hundred, which is gonna bring you to a total of about one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Any of those items do you see as a recurring expense?
Just like I explained, you know, there is no prevention for bedbugs or lice. When it happens, you just gotta make sure that you're on it and you treat it right away. I'm so glad for the courage of that inmate that sent me that grievance. One of the things I did when I took over as Sheriff, all of the grievances come to me, come directly to me, and I read every last one of them. So I'm glad for his courage, and I'm glad for the courage of the mother that did it. So it's no prevention, if I had a warrant, I can waive, I can't waive it to prevent it. We just gotta make sure we jump on it and treat it. So to answer your question, it possibly could be recurrent, because after we spray it, someone else that comes in could do it again.
Not the bedbugs itself, but like mattresses. If it happens, and we replaced mattresses six months down the road, well, we need to replace it. Because if we're gonna allocate funds for that, we need to be mindful of put extra money because of a reoccurring expense that may occur.
Great question. So the mattress recurrence, we take, I have that in my budget to take care of that, right? Because, for instance, mattresses are good for about six months, they only just stand, people sleep on it, like I said, two thousand people, twenty thousand a year. So I have a reoccurring thing where I purchase mattresses, but this is a mass thing outside of the scope of what I have already have budgeted.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I also wanna talk about the leaking pipes and the outdated pipes. Where are we on getting those fixed?
In the locks as well.
In the locks as well. How are you, where are you guys on, have we provided you what you needed so we can move forward? Are you good at this time?
I understand the question. So the Board approved me, I believe, in December for the additional funds to take care of what I call the three L's, lice, leaks, and locks. So I received a phone call and a grievance from the inmate, same exact one. And the grievance stated that the inmate was inside of a cell and he was having trouble with his toilet. So, of course, I replied back, hey, we should have no toilet issues, because I came to the Board and the Board released the money for me to take care of it. Well, when I got with C G L to find out why were we still having toilet issues and I just purchased the new ones, I was told that it takes fourteen weeks to build one toilet. And I needed sixty-two toilets. So in order for me to get the entire sixty-two toilets that I need, it would take twelve months for me to get the toilets.
You'd take them up at Home Depot.
Of course, that was a problem. So meanwhile, while I need these toilets, there's, of course, inmates that can't use the toilets. So when I asked, is there any other toilet that can go in this place, that can do this? I was told that due to the plumbing, that there's only one toilet that can be made to put in this, put in this space. And even the toilet that we're gonna buy, they're not one hundred percent sure that this is the toilet that can fit and go there. So it's still gonna be- So it's still gonna be a shot in the dark. So then when I asked, well, how do we fix the problem, to like one hundred percent fix the problem? And they told me that the only way to do it is if we redo the entire plumbing system. And then, of course, that would take coming to you all, asking for more money. But just for the people that wanna know.
We need to update.
I have the funds for the toilets. It's just gonna take me twelve months to get it. That's for the toilets. To answer your question about the locks, the board gave me the money for the locks. It was gonna cost three million dollars. The company Willow had to come and build a prototype because they had never used it on a system like this, so they had to customize it and really do it. So they came in and they put the locks on four or five doors in our, in our space to make sure that the doors were working and it would work. Well, having a discussion with building and maintenance director, he wanted the locks to be moved into a different location of the jail so that they would, so he could see if they really worked in that area. And then he would then sign off on it to the board that he believes that it works. So we're waiting on the time for that to happen, which again pushes us further. To answer the question about the lights, same thing. Got the money from the board to do the lights. The lights, ask them, hey, how long does it take to do the lights? Well, they're doing two or three sections a day. It's gonna take four months to get all the lights replaced. So the issue is not the funding, because you all have graciously given me the funding to take care of it. The issue is gonna be the manpower and what it takes to get it done. If I could hire two or three different companies to come in and make this faster, hey, I'm open to it and let's do it. Because meanwhile, every second that we take that these lights are not replaced, that's how they're making the shanks to stab one another. Every second that we take to not replace these doors, that's someone breaking out of a door that we have locked to go ahead and assault someone else. And every time we do not replace the toilet, that is someone that is unable to flush or use a toilet in the facility.
So what you just told us is that this board is not upholding its constitutional responsibilities. The responsibility of the jail itself and all buildings in the county is the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners. And I'm so glad that we're always referencing this. It talks about the constitutional officers and the responsibilities of the board and the Board of Commissioners, which both myself and Commissioner Anderson have had copies made for the entire board, along with the county duties and the powers. And I've sent out on several occasions that discuss this specifically what our responsibilities are. A county acts, though, through its governing authority, generally a Board of Commissioners or a sole commissioner, which we do not have. Other independent elected officials are also part of the county government, such as the constitutional officers, the magistrate court, the coroner, the state court judge, and the solicitor general. And we heard our solicitor general come before us as well. On top of that, Mr. Reed, are you trying to get a hold of me right now? I'll speak to you when we're in the back. All right. On top of that, it also says the Board of Commissioners has a responsibility for approving the annual budget for all operations of the county, including the constitutional officers. The budget must be balanced and account for each unit of the county. While the, while that sounds simple enough, the fact that the independent elected county officials are also funded through the budget makes it very complicated. And then finally, any budget approved by the Board of Commissioners must be reasonable and must provide reasonably sufficient funds to allow the constitutional officer to discharge his or her legal duties. There is a fine line between providing what the Board of Commissioners believe is a responsible budget and dictating to a constitutional officer how to perform his or her statutory duties. So I apologize to you. I think that I'm gonna say something that nobody else is gonna wanna say. I think this board owes a gratitude of debt to our previous sheriff. We're glad that you're here. Because at the end of the day, while they're still working through things that are not clear on that level, we understand that we had to clean this jail. We had to clean this jail until he was put on suspension for three years and then that was carried out. So for three years, you have come before us asking for what should have been in that jail from the beginning. And when we talk about serving the people, DC, you said it best. If you wanna know what we care about, folks, go to those that people may think are the least. And nobody should have to live in those conditions. And I commend you for stepping up, for answering those questions. And I only wish that this board would one day give the, provide the oversight that they provide to a constitutional officer to its own responsibilities of department leaders. And we would be in a better place. But we've got to make sure that whoever is in charge of making sure that what's voted on by this board is carried out, that it is done, that it is done. It is, it's totally unconceivable that I too received this information from a mother because her child is having to lay in something like that. It is unconceivable that somebody within this organization would send to the news the state of being of that jail over the past three years, understanding what is going on, and yet and still we approve what should happen and it not be done? One of our largest providers of toilets is Toto. They are across the nation. All you gotta do is go ask them. They build toilets right down the road. To hear that it's gonna take twelve months for somebody that is in there, and let's all remember this. It is overcrowding because of the pandemic, because of what has happened. But yet and still, as a board, we sit here callous and we don't run the county, of which we're responsible to run. But yet and still, we don't make sure that staff gives and does what needs to be done for those people that are held up as we continue to receive emails about judges not taking case after case and people are still sitting in the jail. I sat and talked to a mother the other day, and I sent it to you as well, and thank you for your help. But this young man has been in jail for two and a half years on a matter that normally he would have already been processed. People need to understand the duties and the responsibilities of the government. And that's how we're going to serve this county. So you know what? Considering it is June, Juneteenth, I urge everybody in this room, everybody on this board, to do exactly what our parents taught us to do, which is simply read. It is always stated, if you don't want nobody of color to know something, put it in a book. So we don't need to prove people right. We need to prove them wrong. You all have this constitutional officer responsibility. You all have the county powers that be. And I'm gonna speak to the fact that anything that is not done that this board has committed it to do, you are to send up to the same people that can make a decision. It's called an Annie Lightman. You send it up there and you make this board do what it needs to do for, on behalf of the people. I'm only one vote, but I am not going to sit here idling. I don't care what questions are raised. I don't care what anybody tries to do. We all have a responsibility to the people, and this is not right. And Mr. Chair, you are over this county. You are the one over operations. No one should have to come and tell us what is going on and what is slowing down these operations. This needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed now in every department and in every office. We got to do just what you said, DC. Focus on the people and do what needs to be done. I utterly apologize to you and every citizen of this county and every citizen that is in that jail.
Amen.
I'm embarrassed.
You have anything else, Sheriff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam, uh, not Madam Clerk, Mr. Reed, is there a need for public, not public comment, we already had that, need for executive session?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Reed, please.
Yes, on litigation, real estate, and personnel.
All right, is that motion going to executive session?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Well, y'all let me get it out. Is there a motion to go into executive session for real estate, litigation, and personnel?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, uh...
No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Before going into executive session, I wanted to mention about GDOT. I've been reading lately regarding that department having to, I guess, talk with different people, different counties and all regarding the darkness of the expressways, particularly seventy-five. And about a year or a year and a half ago, I brought to the attention of this board. Yes, you did. Regarding seventy-five from Morrow City up through Fulton County, how dark it is. So I would like for someone to add Clayton County to that list of inquiries that they are doing as far as the expressways are concerned. I noticed they mentioned Henry County. There was no, well, there was a mention from Henry, from Henry County to Clayton County, but it stopped. But we need to include, someone need to include Clayton County in that list of concerns regarding, I know seventy-five. Madam Commissioner.
Mr. Stafford, didn't we have a conversation with Georgia Power reference to that?
Yeah, we gonna come to, while he's coming to the podium, are you asking him to come to the podium, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I asked.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So what we're talking about is doing the repair of the interstate lighting that we had the copper wire and a lot of that taken out. Mr. Matarco just recently got an update from Georgia Power. They are finishing phase one. And as Commissioner Hamburg is talking about phase two, along the other part of the corridor, we're asking them to give us an assessment on that as well.
And we may wanna check because someone brought it to the attention of GDOT that the lights are on during the day, but they're off at night. So I'm not sure if that's the same situation with the lights in Clayton County or not. So someone may wanna check that out.
Yes, ma'am. We'll check into that as well.
Okay, thank you. Madam Commissioner and Mr. Chair, wait.
Go ahead.
This is exactly what I'm speaking of. We have a designated person that's supposed to be at the table. I speak directly to GDOT on a regular basis, and I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. This county misses out because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. If you're not at the table, you are on the menu. And if you're at the table, you have to participate. And we have to respond when information is brought over. Clayton County can no longer be in the place of nonresponsiveness. And for the last several years, we have been responding as commissioners. We've had that conversation as policymakers. But we need those who are there and designated to step up and speak, Commissioner Hamburg. And as we know, we elect who the person is to speak. So I'm really, really hoping that we will move forward. And I've already talked to GDOT about coming to give another update. And Commissioner, if you could send, I'll send you an email so you'll know the dates that they're available to come and give that update once again.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Y'all have a good night. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion to reconvene.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please make them all together.
All right, thank you. First is a property damage claim in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents made payable to Subrogation Payment Processing Center Progressive Premier Insurance Company of Illinois relating to an accident that occurred on or about July 2nd, 2022 at Crane Road and Walt Stevens Road. And this is on behalf of Tanika Bowman. The next is a settlement agreement, a proper, I mean, I'm sorry, a personal injury between Shalanza, S-H-A-L-O-N-Z-A, Smith and county officer Kelly Gregory relating to an accident that occurred on April 1st, 2022 in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in that accident. Don't have the location, but it was on April 1st, 2022. The last is Olurimi Adeoye, A-D-E-O-Y-E, relating to an accident, a traffic accident that occurred on July 19th, 2021. And that is in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars and asking for authorization for the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of those? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Have a good evening.